Good evening, the forty-sixth meeting of this seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. In the interest of sticking with executive orders and safety, we ask everyone to please wear their mask from the public. We also ask that you turn off all electronic devices or at a minimum, put them on silence. This body is fully vaxxed as well as boosted. Some of our members have decided not to wear masks. Obviously speaking, we are not required to wear masks either. Our invocation for this evening will be delivered by Reverend Dr. Robert E. Young, who's the pastor at Wayland Baptist Church in Baltimore City. Reverend Dr. Robert E. Young, the floor is yours.
Will you bow your heads as we pray? Dear wise and loving God, thank you for the many and abundant blessings, for life itself, for health and friendships. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, honoring of bearing appropriate responsibilities. You said that citizens ought to adhere to governing authorities and you've established authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. We pray now for our city council, our city officials, our mayor. We ask that you would grant them the wisdom to govern, a sense of welfare, a keen thirst for justice, confidence in what is good, and the ability to work together in harmony. Bless the agenda set before them today. Bless our beloved city of Baltimore. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Young. At this time, we will state the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. I truly appreciate it. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
We will now proceed to the adoption of journals. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, a corrected journal of the November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two proceedings and the journal for December fifth, two thousand twenty-two proceedings are in the council members' desks.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Communications from the mayor, we have some executive nominations. So Madam Clerk, if you could please go into the first nomination.
EA two-two dash zero-one-five-one, Peter Bodie, member, Police Accountability Board, District One.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-five-two, Megan Kenny, member, Police Accountability Board, District Twelve.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-five-three, Stephanie V. Lee, member, Police Accountability Board, District Four.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-five-four, Antoine Burton, member, Police Accountability Board, District Six.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-five-five, Dr. Doris Minor Terrell, member, Police Accountability Board, District Twelve.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-five-six, Jamal Turner, member, Police Accountability Board, District Two.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-five-seven, Jasmine O. Riggins, member, Police Accountability Board, District Three.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk. We will now go into bills to be introduced. The first bill is twenty-two dash zero-three-two-six. Madam Clerk, if you could please read it in.
Charter Amendment Repeal Term Limits. For the purpose of repealing term limits for Baltimore City elected officials, including the mayor, comptroller, city council president, and the city council members, and submitting this amendment to the qualified members of the city for adoption or rejection. Dorsey, sponsor Dorsey.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to recognize the sponsor of the bill, Councilman Dorsey. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. A decade from now, I will not be a member of this body. But at that time, some member of this body will be very capably representing tens of thousands of people, many of whom will wish for that person to continue to be able to do so. And if the changes enacted by the passage of Question K remain in effect, then those people will, a decade prior, have been robbed of their freedom to choose their desired representation. And what we know from the research of legislative term limits in particular, is that the people lined up to fill the seat are more likely to have been bought and paid for by wealthy and powerful interests, just like Question K itself. I don't watch Sinclair broadcast programming, but I'm sure that this is not the message of personal liberty they have put forth to their viewers, a message that voters should be able to always be free to choose their representation without interference. I believe that when one person has spent as much to promote their own interest and wielded their ownership of mass media to spread propaganda to support their aim as Sinclair owners, Sinclair's owner David Smith has, that this, this, not voters choosing their most desired representatives, this is the power of money and influence run amok. In fact, only one media outlet supported this measure. That one is the one owned by the person who funded the ballot initiative's very existence, a conflict which it even failed to disclose to its viewers. And he's not even a city resident. Without ever showing his face or even needing to step foot into this city, from his home in Cockeysville, he wielded the means to lead us down a primrose path. We have ten years from now until the first election in which Question K's effect will be to strip voters of their choice. I believe in the citizenry of this city, in their ability to see reason through proper discourse, and I believe in this body and the proper use of this city's resources to engage its citizens in conversation, and that we can do so without being blinded or derailed by our own fears of being seen as merely self-serving and self-interested. And I think everybody here knows we can and should do so. And so I ask the question, will we? Will we take up in earnest and with the respect that it deserves, the matter of preserving people's right to choose their representatives for so long as the people wish to choose them? Or will we passively accept the outcome of oligarchical influence and wait for what it has in store for us all next? We have ten years to demonstrate whether we believe ourselves helpless and lacking responsibility in the matter, or whether we have fortitude enough to take action to preserve our democracy in the face of those who would tear it down. We have ten years, but I ask the question now, will we begin the work? And I ask that those of you willing to please co-sponsor this bill, to again, put the question to voters after proper discussion. Thank you, Mr. President. I invite anybody to co-sponsor if they would.
Thank you. At this time, are there any co-sponsors to the merger? I see the hand raised of Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Chairwoman McCray, Councilman Burnett. Thank you all. That bill has been assigned to rules and oversight. Now we're going to go into resolutions. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first resolution.
Two-two dash zero-one-four-seven-R, Homeless Persons Memorial Day. For the purpose of recognizing December first, excuse me, December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, as Homeless Persons Memorial Day in Baltimore City, sponsor Stokes.
Council would like to recognize the sponsor of the bill. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
I'd like to invoke Rule twelve dash one for immediate adoption.
Without any unreadiness or questions or concerns, we will suspend Rules ten dash two and ten dash three. No, what rule is the?
Twelve dash.
What is it? Twelve dash?
Twelve dash one.
Twelve dash one. Hearing and seeing none? You can go into it.
I move for immediate adoption.
It's move for immediate adoption. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, we're in immediate adoption. At this time, Madam Clerk, it's required for us to have a roll call. So Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll. Members, if you could please say aye or nay when you hear your name called.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Dorsey.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Yes.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Ramos.
The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. You can find the consent calendar in Section A on the back of the agenda is their motion to approve the consent calendar. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. You can find the consent calendar again, like I said, in Section A, the back of the agenda. Now, we're going to move into committee reports. Before we do so, I'd like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for the duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles. The first committee we're going to go to is Economic and Community Development. At this time, I'll call on Madam Vice President. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the bill.
City Council Ordinance two-two dash zero-two-seven-nine, Urban Renewal, Cold Stream, Homestead Montebello Amendment.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-two dash oh-two-seven-nine was heard on December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and as we move on, I just want to make this point of information for all four of these urban renewal amendments. So each time urban renewal ordinances are amended, the Department of Legislative Reference will assign a new amendment number. The technical floor amendments for each of today's urban renewal bills is on council members' desks. I move the technical floor amendment for this bill.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, technical amendment is moved.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill moves forward as amended. Will be printed for third reading. The next bill, Madam Clerk, if you could please read in twenty-two dash two-eight-zero.
City Council Ordinance two-two dash zero-two-eight-zero, Urban Renewal, Johnston Square Amendment.
Body would like to recognize Vice President and Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was also heard on December sixth, two thousand twenty-two. The committee approved a technical amendment for this bill, which corrects the typographical era. I move the committee amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, technical amendment is adopted. Madam Vice President.
I move the technical floor amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the technical floor amendment has been moved forward. Madam Vice President.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill moves forward as amended. It will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk.
City Council Ordinance two-two dash zero-two-eight-one, Middle East Amendment.
Council would like to recognize Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-two dash oh-two-eight-one, this bill was also heard on December sixth, two thousand twenty-two. I move the technical floor amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the technical amendment is approved. Madam Vice President.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The bill moves forward favorably as amended. We print it for third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the last and final bill for ECD.
City Council Ordinance two-two dash zero-two-eight-two, Oliver Amendment.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this bill, twenty-two dash oh-two-eight-two, was also heard on December sixth, two thousand twenty-two. I move the committee amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendment is adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
And I move the technical floor amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, technical floor amendment is approved. Madam Vice President.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill moves forward as amended. We print it for third reading. Now we're going to go to rules and legislative oversight. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the first bill.
EA two-two dash zero-one-three-seven, Keon T. Abdul Malik, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District Eight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The floor is yours, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held a hearing seven hours ago on fourteen nominations. I want to thank Richard and Atwana and everybody else who turned these around so quickly, and I would like to move this nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill moves forward. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-three-eight, Miriam Carrion, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District Eleven.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, bill passed. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-three-nine, Sarah Seija K. Desicon, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District Twelve.
The body would like to recognize the chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill moves forward. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-four-zero, Carolyn Jewell, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District Four.
Body would like to recognize the chair of the committee.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill moves forward. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-four-one, Yasmin Karamayan, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District Seven.
This body would like to recognize the chair of the committee.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill moves forward. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-four-two, Sierra Miles, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District Two.
Council would like to recognize the chair of the committee.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the nomination moves forward. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-four-three, Monica E. Mitchell, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District Five.
Body would like to recognize the chair of the committee.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the nomination moves forward. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-four-four, Robin Anne Neverdon, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District Six.
The body would like to recognize the chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination moves forward. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-four-five, Anna Rodney, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, and I apologize, the district is not listed.
The body would like to recognize the chair of the committee.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the nomination moves forward. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-four-six, Tevis S. Simon, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District Nine.
The body would like to recognize the chair of the committee.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the nomination moves forward. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-four-seven, Ella Smothers, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District Thirteen.
The chair would like to recognize the chair of the committee.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-four-eight, Stephanie Solbaran, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District Thirteen.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination moves forward. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-four-nine, Sarah Elizabeth Whaley, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District Twelve.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
Please stand if you're speaking.
President, I think she called out the wrong number. She said four-nine.
She didn't say forty-nine?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for catching that. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the last bill in.
EA two-two dash zero-one-four-nine.
Yep.
Sarah Elizabeth Whaley.
Oh, which one? Oh, that's different then. Let's go off the agenda. Sorry about that.
EA two-two dash zero-one-four-nine, Gab Sussman, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District One.
The body would like to recognize the chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. If you recall, the chair held this meeting, how many, how long ago? Couple, six?
Seven and a half hours ago.
So there was a scramble between the executive secretary as well as council staff to ensure that we updated the agenda. So you guys have all the updated agendas. However, the script for the clerk is a little off, so that's why we're going to go off the agenda now. Madam Clerk.
EA two-two dash zero-one-five-zero, Sarah Elizabeth Whaley, member, Baltimore City Commission for Women, District Twelve.
The body would like to recognize the chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this nomination moves forward. Now we're going to move into Ways and Means.
City Council Ordinance two-two dash zero-three-zero-two, Sale of Property, Twenty-eight-oh-one Harford Road, a portion of Block four-one-nine-nine, Revised Lot Nine.
At this time, the council would like to recognize the chair of the committee, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on this bill on Tuesday morning after introduction. On Monday, there was a time-sensitive issue related to this and furtherance of Morgan State's master plan. Committee voted out favorably. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill moves forward. We print it for third reading. Bills on third reading for same-day advancements. We turn now to the bills on third reading for final passage that require invocation of City Council Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancement. The clerk will read the bills and call the roll.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-two-seven-nine, Urban Renewal, Cold Stream, Homestead Montebello Amendment. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway.
Just wait for her to finish.
Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
Before we approve this, Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, just a point of order question. I thought we needed to invoke the change in the rules, the rules, to suspend the rules to double-read, so we wanted to do that first before voting on the bill itself.
Correct.
So I go ahead and, well, we just finished the vote, so I don't know how you want to do that.
No, we have not ratified the vote, so go ahead.
Okay. I make a motion to invoke Rule twelve-one for same-day advancement from second reader to the third reader for twenty-two dash zero-two-seven-nine.
Thank you so much. Is there a second? It's been, a motion's been on the floor, it's been probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Thank you so much. That allows us to do twelve dash one for same-day advancement. We appreciate you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Sure. Do you want me to do the others too, or?
We just did that as a body for the next bills. Is that fine with everybody?
Well, I had named, I had specifically named that bill, so that's why I thought we mean.
Yeah, but I thought you wanted to do bill by bill. What I'm asking the body is, we're just going to do it all as a group. Is that fair? We're good? Any unreadiness there? Okay.
All right.
So Councilwoman Ramos, if you could please call a motion and invoke it for all of the City Council bills that's coming up.
Sure. I'd like to invoke Rule twelve-one for same-day advancement for, from second reader to third reader for the following bills, twenty-two dash zero-two-seven-nine, twenty-two dash zero-two-eight-zero, twenty-two dash zero-two-eight-one, and twenty-two dash zero-two-eight-two.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Ramos. Madam Clerk. So what we're going to do is, we're going to read back in twenty-two dash two-seven-nine. We're going to re-vote. Obviously, it's third reading, so you don't have to say yea or nay, and then we're going to ensure that we properly approve all of the four bills that was listed. So start with twenty-two dash two-seven-nine.
Twenty-two dash zero-two-seven-nine, Urban Renewal, Cold Stream, Homestead, Montebello Amendment. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.[1576.46]
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
Two-two dash zero-two-eight-zero Urban Renewal Johnston Square Amendment. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
Two-two dash zero-two-eight-one Urban Renewal Middle East Amendment. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
Two-two dash zero-two-eight-two Renewal Oliver Amendment. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk. Twenty-two dash two-eight-two? We're good?
Two, it's the same one.
You're good? All right. So that bill is approved. Now, we're going to move to bills on regular third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in twenty-two dash two-nine-three.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-nine-three Sale of Property Thirteen-twenty-one Filbert Street. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved, but we will hold this bill back from going to the mayor to allow the Board of Estimates to take it up on its December the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. But it is approved and will be sent to the mayor after the Board of Estimates votes on it. By city charter, this is a bill that has to be not only voted on by our body, but also by the Board of Estimates. Because it's the end of the year, typically, we do it in between second and third reading. But we want to ensure, because it's such an important bill for our colleague in the tenth district, that we did our work here on the council and appropriately pass it on to the Board of Estimates. Clearing of the bills. Is there any questions or unreadiness regarding that? All right, thank you. Members, clearing of the bill status list can be found on page six of the agenda as we've announced the past couple of meetings. The bills have been withdrawn. At this time, we're going to get into committee announcements. The first committee, when you hear your name, please stand. We'll go to ECD. Madam Vice President, do you have any announcements? Thank you. Next up, we're going to Education, Workforce, Youth. Chairman, thank you. Next up, we're going to go to Health, Environment, and Technology. Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Okay, I have a number of announcements. And thank you, Mr. President. On Wednesday, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, at ten a.m., the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing for Resolution two-one dash zero-zero-three-nine-R, Violence Against Women and Overlook Public Health Crisis. That same day, at ten oh-one a.m., the committee will hear Resolution two-one dash zero-zero-seven-one-R, Investigative Hearing Developing a Coordinated Response to Baltimore City's Overdose Crisis. On Wednesday, February first, two thousand twenty-three, at ten a.m., the committee will hold a hearing on Resolution two-two dash zero-zero-nine-one-R, Informational Hearing The Effects of Post-Traumatic Stress Disorder on First Responders. That same day, at ten zero-one a.m., the committee will hear Resolution two-two dash zero-one-three-six-R, Informational Hearing Status of the Baltimore City Municipal Identification Card Program. The committee will also hold hearings on Legislative Oversight LO-two-two dash zero-zero-two-seven, Quarterly Legislative Oversight Hearing, Department of Transportation, on the following dates: Wednesday, February eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten a.m.; Wednesday, May third, two thousand twenty-three, at ten a.m.; Wednesday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten a.m.; and Wednesday, November eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten a.m. Finally, the committee will hold hearings on Legislative Oversight LO-two-two dash zero-zero-one-nine, Quarterly Legislative Oversight Hearing, Department of Public Works, on the following dates: Wednesday, February eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten oh-one a.m.; Wednesday, May the third, two thousand twenty-three, at ten oh-one a.m.; Wednesday, August the ninth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten oh-one a.m.; and Wednesday, November eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten oh-one a.m. All of the hearings will be held in the council chamber and also through WebEx for public testimony.
Thank you, Chairwoman McCray. We're going to go to Public Safety, Government, Operations. Nothing from there.